Good evening.
Hello.
Hi. Whoa.
Hello.
Hi, can you hold on a sec? We're gonna, you're unmuted, which is amazing. And I hesitant.
Isn't that a?
It is.
I don't know what happened. What did you do differently?
I honestly don't know. Um, can I, can I ask you? So I don't, I'm hesitant to mute you, but I have to open the meeting. Can I ask you to just wait and then we'll call on you for public comment, okay? So just hold tight.
Can you ask me? Could you repeat that? Could you ask me to what?
To just hold on. I, I'm gonna do a little introduction.
Yes, of course, of course, yes.
Great, so just hold tight. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. Welcome to the October 1st City Council Meeting. I'm Gina Louise Shara and I will be presiding this evening. This meeting and all who participate in it with us on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. We will begin as always with public comment. If you know you wish to make a public comment, please use the raised hand feature. At the bottom of the screen, you have a menu bar that's, and if you click on the participants there, it'll open up a sidebar and at the bottom of that, there is a feature to raise your hand. So click on that raise hand button to raise your hand virtually. If you're on the phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature and send a message to me. I'll do my best to monitor that for people having technical difficulties, but that's the only purpose for which we'll use that function. And it'll only be used during public comment. I'll unmute each raised hand one by one and ask if you'd like to make a comment. When you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. After three minutes, I'll ask you to please finish your sentence. According to the council rules, we do not respond during public comment as it is your time. While your comments should be directed to us, you'll understand when we don't respond. You may speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. Due to the size of the meeting and that it's public and how Zoom works, all participants will need to be muted until called upon. I'll also ask that all, but the council turn off their video until called upon as comments are directed to the council and only the person recognized has the floor. We'll do our best to act quickly if someone is clearly acting in a way that's inappropriate, deploying profanity or slurs, or displaying something outside of what one would expect in council chambers. And I'll remove anyone who needs to be removed from the meeting. If you don't wish to make a comment, we ask that you watch on Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media through their YouTube channel or other platforms. The, the recording of this meeting will be available on Northampton Open Media's Government Video Archive channel on YouTube, and I thank them as always. And we're always happy to receive comment by email, which is also part of the public record. So please email us at citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. So with that, we will open up public comment. And I'm gonna start with the phone number that ends in 7081 because we have been trying to unmute Hildegard for weeks now. Hildegard, the floor is yours. State your name and city or town.
Yes, this is Hildegard Friedman at 413-582-7081 in Northampton.
Wonderful, thank you. Please go ahead.
This is Berlin too. I am in the throes of beginning concerts. And they're going to include Northampton, although they are tri-state. For people who have been discriminated against, and they are the performers, and they are going to be paid. And I'm going to be paid in large outdoor settings such as a drive-in setting. I'm in touch with the city hall trying to ascertain something about a specific piece of land in Northampton. The people in the drive-in setting will be performing song, instruments, dance, and theater. And the people that are in the policing council are welcome to perform. This is spoken song. You'll be getting the music in the next, next council meeting or in the next two council meetings. This is spoken song. I have come here naked of fear. I have come here to love you, my chair. I have come here with memories of love. And we will do music beneath blue skies above. I was there on that train with the blackened windowpane. By the way, that's the Underground Railroad, which isn't in the song. I was there on that train with the blackened windowpane. I was there on the slave ship with a bloodied refrain. I was there with Montezuma when the Skatchers turned to sand. And I'm here once again, and this is your land. Fly high upon that birdland too. Climb up upon that sea. Rise up upon that mountain and reach that steeple key. Climb up upon the canyon and shout from dam and road. We are wreathed in blood, companion. But heaven is your abode. Please let me hear from you. I want everyone to vote, but you can't vote for institutionalized racism. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm glad you were able to speak with you. Okay. Um, next, I see Noah Cassis. Noah?
Hi. Sorry about, I'm not sure if you can hear the background noise, but there's a little bit of music going on, so I apologize for that. Um, I'm Noah. I use he/him pronouns. I'm 17 years old and I'm speaking tonight as the Chair of the Northampton Youth Commission about, about the Vote 16 proposal for lowering, for including in the charter revisions, a move to lower the municipal voting age to 16. As I think you'll all know, the Northampton Youth Commission is strongly in support of this. We've been working on this for a while and we're so excited that we've, we've gotten to the step where, where we can go to the legislature soon. We're very grateful for the city council's support in the past and hope to, hope to win all of your support tonight as well. Specifically, I guess I'd like to offer a few points for why I think it's very important right now. I think the first thing is that young people have shown during this pandemic more than ever with both the pandemic and the revival of the civil rights movement, that they are ready to be involved in politics and they are incredibly passionate and incredibly interested in, in fighting for, for positive change. And then another thing I think would be just that increasingly the crises that we're seeing, whether around climate change, whether around the economic crisis, whether around the racial justice crisis, whether around the pandemic, these things are all going to hugely determine the lives of young people as we move forward. And I think it's just so important that we are given a voice now to help determine our city's response to all these issues. So I'm super excited for this to move forward. I hope that we will win all of your votes tonight as we have many of you in the past. And I thank you so much for, for taking this up and, and yeah, being, being, uh, being, being great.
Thank you so much. Okay, next. Um, Adele Jordan.
Hello, my name is Adele Jordan. I use she/her pronouns. I am 17 years old. I live in Ward Seven and I'm also coming to you this evening from Northampton Youth Commission. This is going through my fourth year on the youth commission, so I've dedicated the past three years to mainly working on Vote 16 Northampton. I think that it is so important to me and my peers because I have firsthand seen how passionate my peers are about local matters and how much they care about improving the Northampton community and that that is around them. For example, my government class that I am in right now at the North, at Northampton High School is the most civically engaged and informed group that I have ever personally witnessed, despite all of us being 16 and 17 years old. We are tackling matters that our leaders shy away from, yet we still are waiting eagerly for the point where we feel as if our voices can be heard. We are bright and curious young adults living in Northampton. We are the ones who are directly impacted by changes made through our city government. By lowering the municipal voting age, our voices will be heard on matters affecting us and our community, teaching us in the future that we can speak out, that we can be heard, that we can make changes that we want to see. So yeah, I really hope that you guys can push this forward because we all really care about it and it's so important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Dahlia Breslow. Oh, you're muted. There you go.
Thanks. My name is Dahlia Breslow. I'm 16 years old and I live in Ward Two. I'm also, I'm coming here on behalf of the Northampton Youth Commission in support of the initiative to lower the municipal voting age to 16. Because like everything the city council should pass, it would improve our city. Allowing 16 and 17-year-olds to weigh in on issues affecting our city would increase the diversity of voices that are heard. Lowering the voting age would grant us the right to vote for our school committee members and shape our educational environment for the better. Every 16-year-old is in a unique position where we are in real time learning about the privileges and the power that comes with the right to vote. We are educated and responsible enough for that right. Thanks, I hope you pass it.
Thank you very much. And next we have Ezekiel Baskin.
Hi, everyone. Ezekiel Baskin, Northampton. I just wanna echo what the previous speakers all said. I think lowering the voting age for municipal elections to 16 is a really great idea that will allow a whole new range of civically informed and excited enthusiastic voters to participate in our municipal government processes. This is also, I have a side note thought that I know you can't act on right now, but I'm just gonna throw it out there, um, which is, I feel like there should be a voting member on the school committee who is a student in the Northampton Public Schools. I think there's been various forms of representation of student membership, but they've never had a vote. And I think that it would also make sense. I know the charter won't be reviewed again for another 10 years, but I, I think that students should have more of a say over the schools and that one voting member on the school committee would be the sort of a minimum bar for that. Um, yeah, that's everything. Thank you all so much for your continued, everything you do.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment? Again, it's the, you click on participants at the bottom toolbar and then click on raised hand in the participant bar. I don't see any chats, so, okay. I don't think there's any more public comment. Thank you for those that participated. Um, Laura, we can convene. Will you please take the role? Oh, hold on, sorry. Laura?
Thank you. Councillor Dwight?
Here.
Councillor Foster?
Here.
Councillor Jarrett?
Here.
Councillor Labarge?
Here.
Councillor Mayori?
Here.
Councillor Nash?
Here.
Councillor Quinlan?
Here.
Councillor Shara?
Here.
And Councillor Thorpe?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the announcement of a public hearing. This is a public hearing on an administrative order. The following public hearing is hereby advertised in accordance with the Charter of Northampton, Massachusetts, Article Six, Administrative Organizations, Section 6-1, Organization of City Agencies. By the order of the City Council, the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing by remote participation on Thursday, October 15th, 2020 at 7:05 PM. Instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the October 15th, 2020 City Council Agenda to be posted on the city's website, which is northhamptonma.gov. At least 48, that will be posted at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. The City Council will consider proposed amendments to the City of Northampton Administrative Code, Part Two, Multiple Member Appointed Organizations, Section 23.0, Public Shade Tree Commission. The City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon, and it begins at 7:00 PM. I'm gonna, just so people know what this hearing is going to be on, I'm gonna quickly read this administrative order. Just so it's clear, I'll read the letter, that might help. So this is from Mayor David J. Narkowitz to the Honorable Members of, of the City Council. Pursuant to my authority under Article Six, Section 6-1 of the City Charter, I am especially submitting the attached administrative order making the following changes to the administrative, City's Administrative Code. One, change the name of the Public Shade Tree Commission to the Urban Forestry Commission. This change to the name of the Public Shade Tree Commission has come at the bequest of both the commission itself and the tree warden to better reflect the broader mission of this important this important multiple-member body, which extends beyond public shade trees to promoting and preserving the city's entire tree canopy. Two, change the membership composition of the newly renamed Urban Forestry Commission and designate an ex officio chair. This administrative order also modifies the membership composition of the newly renamed Urban Forestry Commission from seven city residents to six city residents and the city's tree warden. It also designates the city's tree warden as the ex officio chair of the commission. Since the creation of the Public Shade Tree Commission by administrative order in November of twenty fourteen, the city's tree warden has played an active and central role in the work of the body and attended all of its meetings. Making the city's tree warden a member of the commission would formalize that role, and making them the ex officio chair would align it with the twenty nineteen administrative order changing the Transportation and Parking Commission and the Energy and Sustainability Commission. There is currently a vacancy on the commission following the resignation of the founding member and former longtime Chair Lily Lombard, so this change will be fairly seamless and not require a resignation. Thank you in advance for your review of these proposed changes to administrative code. I stand ready to answer any questions or write any additional information, request the City Council's approval of the attached administrative order sincerely David J. Narkowitz, Mayor. So, those are the changes that will be, um, taken up, um, at the public hearing, which I've lost, there you go. Um, and again, that's, uh, Thursday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven oh five PM. Um, next is announcement of another public hearing, this is twenty point zero zero three, National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for Beacon Street. And, uh, this is petition number two nine two one five five seven two, per Mass General Law, Chapter One Sixty-Six, Section Twenty-two. A public hearing will be held on Thursday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven fifteen PM, on the petition of National Grid Verizon New England to erect poles and wires upon, along, under, or across one or more public ways on Beacon Street. The hearing will be held via remote participation, please see Agenda the October fifteenth, twenty twenty, City Council Meeting for instructions for accessing the hearing. And, um, I will note that the DPW finds no conflicts with this petition as long as the required excavation trench permit is issued prior to construction. So that hearing again will be October fifteenth at seven fifteen. And next is an actual public hearing, so this is public hearing on twenty point one oh nine, National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for Prospect Street. This is petition number two nine nine one four two five zero, per Mass General Law, Chapter One Sixty-Six, Section Twenty-two. Public hearing will be held on Thursday, October first, twenty twenty, at seven oh five PM, on the petition of National Grid Verizon New England to erect poles and wires upon, along, under, or across one or more public ways. And the DPW, um, has also reviewed this and does not find any conflicts with existing utilities or public shade trees, as long as a valid trench permit is approved by the DPW before work commences. So, somebody wish to?
Move to open the public hearing, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Dwight, seconded by Councilor Jarrett, to open the public hearing. Any discussion on opening public hearing? A roll call on opening the hearing, please, Laura.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councilor Labarge?
Yes.
Councilor Mayori?
Yes.
I don't know why.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe?
Go on.
Yes.
And Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, the, um, hearing is opened, and first I'm gonna ask for proponents, and I see that Lisa Chazinsky from National Grid is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this, the poll petition is, um, for what we call a stub poll, it's to support existing construction. Right now, the stub poll, it sits inside quite a, inside Child's Park quite a bit, and it's guide to a dead tree. There's not much left of the tree, and I'm sure it will be coming down, but at the time, I thought when we're gonna remove that guy, we really should put the stub pole at the appropriate place, which is, you know, inside the curb with an anchor there, not so deep into the park itself. So it's replacing existing construction, just moving it into the public way.
Any questions for Lisa? Are there other proponents? So if you wish to speak to, at this hearing, uh, same process as public comment, you can use the Raise Hand feature, which, down at the bottom of your Zoom window, there's a menu bar with participants, you click on that, and a window opens up with the participants. At the bottom, there is a Raise Hand button, so go ahead and click on that if you want to speak, um, or if you're having trouble with that, you can tell me in the chat. But I do not see any other proponents. Are there any opponents?
Move to close the public hearing, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Dwight, seconded by Councilor Labarge, close the public hearing, any discussion on closing? Roll call in closing, please, Laura.
Councilor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councilor Labarge?
Yes.
Councilor Mayori?
Can you hear me? No. Uh, yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
And Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is closed. We've been putting these petitions in the consent agenda, but I think it's appropriate to just go ahead and take a vote after the hearing closes, so is there a motion to approve the National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for Prospect Street?
The moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Dwight, seconded by Councilor Labarge, just seconded. Hearing none, roll call please on approving the petition.
Councilor Labarge?
Yes.
Councilor Mayori?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
And Councilor Jarrett?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa.
Next, we have, uh, updates. I'm gonna just make a quick update. We will be having a very brief special meeting on Thursday, October eighth, at five PM, for the second reading on the election warrant. It was inadvertently left off this agenda, and the omission was very unfortunately realized, and thank you to Councilor Labarge for recognizing it, um, just a little bit past the deadline for this posting, so I really apologize, and, um, I think we can all agree that we very much want to vote on, in the election on November third, um, so I asked the council's indulgence in, for what should be a very, very quick meeting on October fifth, at five PM. Um, I think almost a quorum has indicated to Laura that they can attend, uh, is there anyone who's not gotten back to Laura that can tell us right now that you can attend?
Yeah, I, I can attend.
I just want to clarify, it's October eighth at five PM, I think you just said the fifth, but.
What did I do? If that eight PM, sorry, okay.
Thursday, next Thursday.
Next Thursday, October eighth, at five PM.
I can be there.
Okay, okay, I think everyone.
I can be there, yeah.
I have a commitment, and if I'm the difference between there being a quorum and not, I can change it, um, but if there is a quorum, then I, I have a conflict.
I believe you're the only counselor who can't attend, so I think that we're safe with a quorum, but thanks. Okay, great, thank you very, very much, and again, I apologize. Um, let's, so those are my, that's my announcement or update. Are there other committee chair? I see Councilor Labarge, and then Councilor Nash, Councilor Labarge.
Thank you. Um, the City Service Committee will hold its regular meeting via remote participation on Monday, October fifth, twenty twenty, at four PM. City Services will hold a special meeting within the October fifteenth, twenty twenty, City Council Meeting for the sole purpose of making a recommendation on the appointment of Mark Detrow as Principal Assessor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Nash?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, um, Community Resources will be meeting on a different date. We are meeting, we will be meeting on Monday, October twenty-sixth, at five PM. It'll be a remote meeting, as all of our meetings are, so. And we will continue to be doing outreach and gathering information on the Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance.
Thank you. Um, other chairs or committee members, or we can move into one minute, okay, I see Councilor Quinlan, then Councilor Thorpe.
Uh, the Northampton Policing Review Commission has commenced, we've had two meetings. Uh, Councilor Jarrett and I, uh, both were, were able to participate in both weeks. We've been meeting on Tuesdays, and it looks like we're gonna continue to meet on Tuesdays for the foreseeable future. Uh, there is, uh, some work being done now to divide into some subcommittees to study the issues in depth, uh, in smaller group work. So, uh, we did elect our co-chairs, um, this considerable effort was put forward by the Commission to elect people of color as the co-chairs, uh, we selected Dan Kennedy, uh, and Dana Olivo as the co-chairs, and, uh, we are off and running. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thanks for that work. Councilor Thorpe?
Thank you. The Ordinance Review Committee held its first meeting yesterday, and I was elected as Chair of the Committee, and Megan Peck was elected as Vice Chair of the Committee. The Ordinance Review Committee's next meeting is scheduled for October fourteenth, twenty twenty, at seven PM. Thank you.
Well, and thank you for that work. Other announcements? Seeing none, we will, um, oh, Mr. Mayor, do you have any communications for us? Nope.
No, I do not.
Okay, just had to ask.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute, so.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, so we're gonna move to the consent agenda, and I'm gonna read the items, and then ask if there are any removals for discussion, as there're no, there's no discussion on the consent agenda. Uh, first is the minutes of August twentieth, twenty twenty. Um, next is twenty point one two nine, appointment of Mark Detrow as Principal Assessor for, this is for referral to the City Services Committee. Um, twenty point one three two, appointments to the Arts Council and Northampton Housing Authority for referral also to the City Services Committee. The Arts Council, Kent Alexander, one seventy-four Island Road in Northampton, uh, the term is October twenty twenty to June twenty twenty-three, this is to fill a vacancy. Uh, Northampton Housing Authority to the Board of Commissioners, Jeff Jones, the UFCW Local, uh, one four five nine Organized Labor Representative, seventy-six Woods Road. Um, this is a reappointment for the term March twenty twenty to February twenty twenty-five.
Move approval for the consent agenda, please.
Motion's been made and seconded. Laura, roll call, please, on the consent agenda.
Councilor Mayori?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett?
Yes.
And Councilor Labarge?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda has been passed. Next, we are gonna continue with, um, the Charter Review Commission's recommendations on charter changes. Um, again, we are voting on each individual recommendation that the Commission made, and, um, we will discuss and accept, um, the, these recommendations in collaboration with the mayor, because both branches need to agree on the version that will go forward to the state legislature. Um, the remaining items that we're discussing are all in Article Eight, which is the Elections Section, um, and they need a vote from us, and if accepted, will, we will, um, ask the city solicitor to craft language. So the three items that are remaining are lowering the municipal voting age to sixteen, um, and mailing ballots for municipal elections to all registered voters, and removing the need to cite a specific reason to receive an absentee ballot for municipal elections. And I know that, again, we have, um, members, uh, former members of the Charter Review Committee who are joining us this evening. I see Sam Hopper, who was the Vice Chair, and, um, Stan Walton, who was the Chair, and tell me if I'm missing anybody. Um, so, thank you for joining us, and why don't we go ahead, and does someone want to make a motion to recognize?
Um, move to recognize, recognize the two officers of the Charter Review Committee for purpose of discussion.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Dwight, seconded by Councilor Foster, any discussion on recognizing, um, Mr. Walton and Ms. Hopper? Seeing none, roll call on recognition, please.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councilor Labarge?
Yes.
And Councilor Mayori?
Yes.
Okay, you are duly recognized. Um, so first, let's, let's take up, uh, the recommendation to lower the municipal voting age to sixteen. I'm just gonna read the summary that was, um, in your, uh, recommendation document, and then we will ask for a motion to discuss it, and, um, and then let you all talk to us about it. So, this, um, again, this is the motion to approve lowering the municipal voting age to sixteen, which was approved by the Commission, um, eight zero by a roll call vote, and says the Committee endorsed the recommendation of the Mayor's Youth Commission made at the Public Forum on Election Issues, April thirtieth. Leaders of the Commission cited benefits including increasing voter turnout, encouraging civic engagement at a younger age. They also advocated for high school students having the right to vote for candidates who will make decisions about issues directly affecting them, such as the school budget. Youth Commission leaders also pointed out that many high school students already are activists on issues such as, uh, the March for Our Lives and Green New Deal, and have the maturity and interest to be reasonable voters. Um, so, I think, Sam, are you gonna?
Yes, I'm gonna cover all three of these tonight. Um, so, thank you very much to all of you, thank you for your work, um, on our recommendations to the Charter. So, the lowering the municipal voting age to sixteen was first brought to us by Councilor Dwight, um, as the City Council, the previous City Council had expressed support in, in this idea, um, and this has been led by the Mayor's Youth Commission, who you've heard from tonight. Um, I just want to kind of paint the picture first, um, with some numbers that originally came to us from, uh, our city clerk Pam Powers at our Elections Forum. So, um, since two thousand nine, the average voter turnout at the time when Pam Powers presented was thirty-eight percent, and was never higher than fifty-four percent. This is for, uh, citywide municipal elections since two thousand nine. Um, since Clerk Powers presented in April two thousand nineteen, we've had two additional citywide municipal elections. We're now up to thirty-nine percent as our average voter turnout. Um, so, a, a major theme of our committee was to expand the electorate and maximize voter participation, and lowering the municipal voting age to sixteen is one of the, the ways we saw to do this. Um, as you've heard, young people in Northampton, um, especially here in Northampton, are very engaged in politics, um, and the decisions that are being made on issues that directly affect them. So our, our committee was, you know, we were, um, we heard from folks at Public Comment at the forum, we discussed it, and, you know, we wholeheartedly supported this, and I just want to review some of the, the reasonings that we heard and discussed. So, um, one thing we did discuss is that voting is a right, it's not a privilege, it's not like a driver's license where you have to take a test and prove something. Um, as it is now, the only qualifications to vote are citizenship and your age. Um, as our committee chair noted at the last City Council meeting, we recommend expanding the le, electorate by changing the citizenship requirements, um, and we're also recommending that we change the age requirements. Um, like I said, there's no test like there is to drive, you don't need to own property to vote, you don't need to demonstrate you have knowledge of the issues to vote, um, you don't need to pay taxes to vote, and I bring these up because these are many arguments that folks have heard over the years about why people under eighteen should not vote, um, but because none of these are actual requirements, it was a bit of a moot point in our discussions. Um, another thing that was brought up and we discussed is the importance of civics education for young people, um, and, and how, how important that is to go hand in hand with lowering the voting age. So civics education is a requirement in Massachusetts, I mean, beginning in kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. In two thousand eighteen, Governor Baker signed into law an act to promote and enhance civic engagement, which made it a requirement for schools to have student-led civics projects for grades eight through- for schools to have student-led civics projects for grades eight through twelve. So, I'm just gonna read what the this law had said. These projects must be designed to promote student abilities related to the analysis of analysis of complex issues, to promote consideration of different perspectives, to promote logical reasoning with supportive evidence, and to promote engagement in civil discourse and understanding of the connections between federal, state, and local policies, including those that may impact the student school or community. So, um, if you go back to the fact that voting is a right and not a privilege, and you don't have to be educated, we are educating our students on these topics. Um, so, you know, lowering the voting age in municipal elections could really complement the civics education our students are receiving from our public school educators. Um, another thing that was brought up, um, I believe by one of the youth commission members during the forum, is building habit, right? It's it's important to build habits and good habits and start them young. So, right now, you can vote when you're eighteen, but when you're eighteen, uh, a lot of people are in a transitionary time in their life. You're going off to school, you're, you know, starting a job, you're moving, and it it would be easy to forget. If you move, you may not know you have to register absentee, or you need to register to vote. If students can start, or people can start voting at age sixteen, you're building these habits while you're learning these skills and learning about civics engagement. And hopefully, by the time you're eighteen, you will have built those habits. You remember, oh, yep, that's right, I'm moving away. I I vote every year. I need to remember to register to vote. I need to register absentee. So habit building is was another argument that was brought to us, which we agreed. Um, and then, again, I know this was said, these, the issues, especially municipal issues, are directly impacting our youth. Um, and as a commission, we we just recognize that they really care about it. They do take the time to educate themselves, even though that is not a requirement to vote. Um, and we wanted to give them an opportunity to to have a say. Um. The, a couple things to note here. In the in the charter as it is now, uh, in order to run for elected office, it just says that you have to be a voter. Um, so, we actually discussed, you know, would we lower that threshold to sixteen? And because there are legal legal issues of this, you have to sign contracts, um, you know, land-taking zoning laws, we had recommended that the eligibility to run for elected office should be changed to eighteen or older if the municipal voting age is lowered. And Attorney Seawald had just noted that we would need to redefine in the charter what a voter means, and one of his suggestions was to create a new class called municipal-only voters, which would encompass the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, and then voters would be eighteen and over, who would be able to run for office. Um, so that is a summary of that recommendation.
Thank you. It's a very helpful summary of all of your conversations around that. Um, I, is there, let's let's get a motion so we can discuss this, discuss this, please.
I'd like to move forward the recommendation um to the solicitor, right, for final drafting? Is that what we're doing? Right?
Yeah, we're, I, we are accepting the recommendation, and it will go to the solicitor for that.
Okay. Yeah, there we go.
Okay, so motion was made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Mayori. Um, so, further discussion, and uh Mayor Narcoits is here. So, again, we are doing this in collaboration with the mayor. Um. There, okay, Counselor Nash.
I just wanna say, this is a great idea. I mean, the the the, especially the youth commissioners who have engaged us over the years, especially of late, around the plastic reduction ordinance, around this particular issue, around policing, I, they've all been so articulate, so thoughtful, and um and and really engaged. It's, it's, there's, there's no doubt that that the 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 folks we're talking about here really wanna be part of the process and are ready, and I I thoroughly support this. It's it's been exciting. I actually teared up tonight when the those youth were, um, you can't see it on Zoom, but uh that when, you know, during that public comment, you know, I was realizing this, this was, I think it was the jumping off point for one or two of those people to be engaged in the public process, and it was around this, and I was just like, this is, this is really wonderful. So, anyway, so I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, Counselor Mayori, then Counselor Quinlan.
Yes, thank you for that, Counselor Nash. I feel a lot of 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 kind of pride about our, the youth in our city, and um, we we know voting's a right, but even if it was something that had they had earned, they've more than earned it. I've had such a, um, you know, it's been such a pleasure to be working with the youth commission on the plastic plastics ban, and, you know, the the youth in our in our city are integral integral and dynamic part of our local governance, and that's how it should be. Uh, and I think you'd think it, as as uh Sam said, you know, sets up lifelong habits. Um, and also, you know, with the looming climate crisis, now, I think more than ever, young adults deserve the opportunity to vote on their own future. Um, I don't think we have much to fear here, and if we have fears, we should examine them privately in our own home, because this is a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Quinlan?
I do have a question uh for Sam on uh the expansion of the electorate in this uh case. Do you know how many uh potential voters that would add to Northampton's rolls?
Oh, hold on, sorry.
Sorry. Um, you know, Clerk Powers had given us some numbers back then of how many, how many youth were pre-registered. Um, I I'd have to pull that up. Um, I don't thi, I have the, I have her testimony, and it's not in there. I I have to find that.
It's just curiosity.
Yeah, no, I it's a good question. Some of the youth commission had spoke to us uh about this, and and, you know, a lot of them had said that when they have bake sales, the draw is pre-registering, and and a lot of folks would show up to pre-register and demonstrating that they're ready. So I don't have the numbers, but um the folks who had spoken at our elections forum enthusiastically reported that many folks they knew would be ready, ready to vote. I just don't have the real numbers.
Yeah. Well, I just, if I if I could take another moment, uh, I would just say that uh we, you know, we have two two sons here in the Quinlan household, and they're both former members of the youth commission, and we're we're so proud of them for their participation and uh, you know, the engagement with with Counselor Dwight through that and 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 Mayor Narcoits. Um, you know, and and my son Tucker actually was was one of the uh youth commissioners that presented uh to your, to the Charter Review Commission on this uh very topic. And I recall, uh, Noah Cassis, who spoke to us earlier, had kind of the line of the night when when someone asked, uh, what do you think the the level of participation will be from the young people? And I think Noah's comeback was, well, it would be probably about the same as the adults. It wouldn't be lower, uh, because they they know that there's going to be great participation. So I appreciate uh this recommendation from the Charter Review Commission and and support it so much. Thank you.
You. Um, Counselor Dwight and Counselor Jarrett?
Uh, in 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 expansion and in response to Counselor Quinlan, um, the, well, first of all, this started well over six years ago, and and I I shouldn't get credit for this, because actually, it was introduced by Counselor O'Donnell to the youth commission six years ago. Um, all of those people who first heard this and discussed this idea now have been voting for years. Um, and have, and as Counselor Nash noted, that many of them have actually gone into um activism, social justice actions, and into uh governance, in fact. All of the good. One of the things that they did do was, um, when the state made it allowable for people to register at sixteen and to get basically automatically voting rights as soon as they turn eighteen, there, the youth commission, among others, at the high school and other places, did a big push to get as many people as they could registered, and they were quite successful. I think that's one of the things that uh Clerk Powers had reported, that there, there was, there are people who are queued up and have been queued up for years now, waiting for to be enfranchised and to to actually participate. Uh, and as Counselor Mayori said, to participate in the decisions that are going to do directly impact them, you know, for us aging boomers, provided we survive the pandemic, will um, we, I I I think our say means less. Our skin in the game is diminished. Theirs is not. Their urgency is amplified by the fact that this is their future. Um, and to have people of my age group dictate the terms and conditions by which they're gonna have to endure seems grossly unfair. The arguments we have heard in opposition of allowing this expansion of enfranchisement and expanding the democratic, small D, democratic base, is that we have heard the same arguments, the exact same arguments, identical, that were advanced to prevent African-Americans from voting and to prevent women from voting. You know, when the phrase, I believe when the phrase was coined, one man, one vote, it was indeed just one man, and it was one man who owned property. And if a man didn't own property, then he didn't get to vote. And usually, and in fact, actually, that property could also include other human beings. We have evolved, our constitution evolves, and our democracy evolves. And to become closer to what a true democracy is, is to actually encourage as many people who are vested in the outcome, who have expressed the desire to vote, to give them the opportunity to participate. And I I never really, I understand, you know, the political arguments when you you've seen that, and on both parties, mind you, uh, active uh campaigns to depress voter turnout, or registration, or participation, because it benefits one party or the other. There happens to be one party that is much more egregious, at least of late. And also, given the fact of what we've witnessed, and we will continue to witness, and I'll offer the debate as an example, there are consequences to low voter turnout, serious consequences. And we've had depressed voter turnout throughout the country. And there are consequences here locally, municipally. And if if if, you know, we've heard frequently about, you know, does the government reflect the people to whom they serve? Then, one thing we do, we come up short in a number of ways, but not the least of which is um a younger age group. So I'm I'm, you know, thanks to Counselor O'Donnell for actually promoting this to start with, and the youth commission took to it uh with a zeal that I am, I am proud to witness, and have been proud to witness when Counselor Quinlan's, both his sons, moved through the youth commission, and still didn't get to realize. I mean, that was the other thing. They started on a project, they knew, many of them knew, they weren't gonna see the benefits of the outcome that was gonna directly affect them. They knew that going into this, this is a long slog. It's an arduous process. The making of sausage is not particularly elegant or or efficient. But the fact is that they're committed, and I I the, I haven't seen anything comparable, even in um self-identified adult committees. So, um, I cannot endorse this more strongly, and I will continue to work as a counselor and beyond counsel, if it takes it, uh, to see that this is realized, at least certainly for the city, but hopefully for the entire state, and even dare say for the nation.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I believe I saw Counselor Jarrett, did you, so, I'm gonna, Counselor Jarrett, Counselor Labarge, Counselor Foster.
Great, thank you. Uh, I was just thinking about the numbers question, and, you know, there were eight hundred seventy-eight students at Northampton High School last year, so we can assume about half of those, plus those who go to other schools. So maybe we're looking at five hundred possibly. Um, so that's just just a back-of-the-envelope guess at our potential for increased voter participation. Um, and, you know, the city council passed a resolution in twenty eighteen, and then this spring, we passed support for the Empower Act. Um, and so, um, those detailed many reasons, and many of the reasons people just spoke about that I'm very much in support of, and a key one for me, um, was that that sixteen and seventeen-year-olds possess the same critical thinking skills as eighteen-year-olds, and that in countries where the age has been similarly lowered, uh, studies showed that younger voters were no less informed. So this, to me, means that is a very good reason why um we should expand and enfranchise the greater, a greater group. Uh, so thank you all for, for, I thank you for the youth commission, for all your work over the years, and everyone else.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Labarge?
Thank you. Um, I have always supported the youth commission, and I am supporting to have the voting at sixteen years old. I said it before. I think the youth commission has done an excellent job. I remember marching at Northampton High School with all the young students in regards to gun violence. It was huge, and I was extremely proud of all the students who got together as activists to let everybody hear their voices. I feel our youth commission have been working tirelessly, tirelessly, and they wanna be involved with whatever occurs here in the city that they live in, and I'm proud of them for that. So, yes, I will support this. At them being sixteen years old, I do not have a problem with it, and I wish at one point I could have voted at sixteen, because I think their voices are gonna be very, very critical here in our city of Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Foster?
Thank you, and I would like to thank the Charter Review Commission, um, Sam, Counselor Dwight, Counselor O'Donnell, former Counselor O'Donnell, uh, you know, for for this, um, in the youth commission, uh, you know, the young people who spoke tonight. Um, I mentioned this at our last meeting, um, but I'm pretty excited about a lot of the work of the Charter Review Commission and the idea of expanding the electorate. Um, you know, is is just something that that I'm really uh excited about and proud to be able to vote on tonight. Um, you know, we have this group of people who are asking to be enfranchised, who are educated, who are active, and as has been mentioned, are working, uh, some of them on an issue that they themselves will not even benefit from, and yet continuing to work on it. Um, one of my first jobs out of college, I I was a high school teacher uh for a few years, and there is this, um, you know, propensity in our society from from an awful lot of people to really be dismissive of young people. Um, oh, they're just a teenager, they're just a kid. Um, you know, you you hear that a lot. Um, but I'll tell you, the youth that I've had the privilege of working with, um, that I've seen here in the youth commission, that I've seen in Northampton, um, that's not actually true. I see pretty engaged, thoughtful, active people, um, who are asking to vote, and I agree that they should have a say in who represents them locally. And I think one of the incredible benefits of uh local government, um, is this opportunity to set local policy, and Northampton has an opportunity to be a leader here, um, and that we can try this, and we can make decisions here in Northampton, and and as Counselor Dwight mentioned, it can go to the state level, it, you know, can go federal, um, but we have an opportunity right here in our own commi- uh, community to set policies um that reflect the values of our community. Um, and I very much look forward to um supporting this.
Needed. Um, I don't see any hands, so I'll just take a moment and and also, oh, Counselor Thorpe, uh, here, Counselor Thorpe, you, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. I just wanna say thank you to the Northampton Youth Commission, to Bill Dwight, to former counsel, uh, President O'Donnell, and everyone else who worked on this. I'd like to thank Sam Hopper for coming here this evening and uh talking about this, and I'll, I wanna also thank the rest of the uh Charter Review Committee for working on this. You know, I remember I was working at sixteen, and I was also paying taxes, so uh I'm definitely gonna be in support of this. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Um, I will just, I will add my thanks. I am um part of this old guard that Counselor Dwight mentioned of, you know, counselors who've been working and supporting on, working on this, um, with resolutions, as Counselor Jarrett mentioned, um, and supporting it now for years, since I was younger, though not close to sixteen. Um, and I have just been amazed and astounded by, um, just the the thoughtfulness and the eloquence that the youth of Northampton have shown um around this issue and just. around this issue and just in general in their civic engagement in the past few years, and I'm sure for a very long time. And it's something that I, when they speak, I was at that, the meeting where they presented to the Charter Review Commission. And that conversation that they had, the back and forth that they had with the commission was truly astounding. It, it was their com- not, their comprehension and their thoughtfulness and how much, how much work they had put into it, and just how sort of deeply they had internalized this message and really understood it and, and felt it and could express it was something that I'm incredibly envious of and wish at some point in my life to have a moment of eloquence like they had that evening and have continued to be. So I, I thank them so much for this, and I'm glad we are just one step closer to, to moving this forward. And I'm, I'm sorry to Counselor Quinlin's sons and all the youth that have been working on this for years. And I'm sorry that this process is long, but I, I have a good feeling that we are moving in the right direction this evening. So thank you, everybody. Other comments or questions for Commission? Okay, seeing none, roll call please on accepting this recommendation to lower the vote, municipal, the voting age to sixteen for municipal elections, Laura.
Counselor Quinlin.
Happy to go first, yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Um, uh, Mayor Nerkowitz. I am, I failed to, to ask your opinion on this before we took our vote.
That's totally fine. I'm, I'm obviously the, this is something the mayor's Youth Commission's been working on for many years, and I'm fully supportive of it. So that's, yeah. All said.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so moving on to the next recommendation. This one is removing the need to cite a specific reason to receive an absentee ballot for municipal elections. I'm gonna again read the, um, the summary, and then we'll have a motion, and we'll hear from Sam again and discuss this. So this is, um, okay, so this, the chart, this charter change is recommended in the eventuality that motion number three. You know what? Let's take them in a different. Let's take them in, should we take them in the other order? Let's do that, sorry. Let's do the recommendation to mail ballots first. So this is the motion to approve mailing ballots for municipal elections to all registered voters. And the committee concurs with the recommendation of the city clerk that mailing ballots to all registered voters remedies numerous problems associated with, quote, absentee voting, unquote, and would very likely increase voter participation. So, um, maybe I should have taken them in the other order, sorry. But, so this is sort of, this is the general notion of mailing ballots. I'll, I'll note that the pandemic has really just put a fast track on this conversation before we can even get to it. So is there a motion?
Move to approve, please, or rec- uh, accept the recommendation.
Second meeting.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Sam.
Thank you. Um, so I do think this is the right order to take it in, mailing ballots first, thank you. So I just, I want to go back again to the average Northampton citywide municipal election voter turnout of thirty-nine percent. I don't think that's particularly high. And reiterate again, a major theme was expanding the electorate and maximizing voter participation. So this mailing ballots to all registered voters is another opportunity to be seized. Uh, this was brought to us by City Clerk Pam Powers. And as President Sharon noted, when we made this recommendation, we certainly didn't anticipate a global pandemic. So we could do mailing voting this year, but it's important to note, this was done by legislation, and it's only for twenty twenty elections. So after this, you know, there'd have to be other legislation. There is legislation to make it, so there's mailing, mailing ballots to all registered voters, but I believe it got sent to steady. So we can't really depend, I think it's prudent to take this to the legislature to do this for Northampton. So with this change, ballots would be mailed to every registered voter in the city, again, in hopes to increase voter participation. Clerk Powers had asked these important questions when she first presented this to us, so I just want to repeat them. How does Northampton ensure that every voice is heard? How do we ensure that the elderly, infirmed, over-scheduled parents and caregivers, people with disabilities, and others in our city who are most vulnerable but still have a right to cast their vote, are provided with the most convenient opportunity to vote? How do we remove nearly every barrier to voting? And the answer can be mailing everyone a ballot. So some things that she had discussed, security measures, you know, there, it would be the same security measures we already had in place for absentee ballots, which you're allowed to mail in. Um, and we did discuss that mailing, mailing ballots is not new. It's not new to Massachusetts. As I said, you could mail your absentee ballot in, but this is done in other states. Clerk Powers had noted Oregon most prominently. But I, I just think it's important to know a lot, to, to note that it's not a new concept. This is done, it's worked. Another thing she had brought to us is the cost. So this was just fascinating to learn. I'd never thought about it before, but she shared at our forum that the estimated cost to run our municipal election is about thirty thousand dollars. And it's thirty thousand dollars whether one voter shows up or twenty thousand voters show up. So if we could increase voter turnout, and by making it easier to vote, we would be maximizing the city's cost to run these elections. Another thing, I think we discussed this, is receiving a ballot is also, it's a prompt, right? If you get mailed a ballot, you're reminded, that's right, an election is coming up. You might want to gather information to prepare you. And I just want to leave it at this, at the public forum, so Clerk Powers had joined us with a couple of members from the Board of Registars. And they noted that, as registrars, our objective is to engage the electorate in the election process, to maximize voter participation, and to protect the integrity of the ballots cast. I ask you, should democracy only be available to those who can fit it in their busy schedule? Let's work together to make a voting program that works for everyone. So I just thought that that, you know, summed it up perfectly, and we wholeheartedly supported opening, making it easier for people to cast their vote in Northampton.
Thank you. How very clever of Clerk Powers to prove her own recommendation by handling this so very well in the primary. Okay, Mayor Nerkowitz, I see you've shown yourself.
I just was unmute, I just was.
Jump in, okay. Just let me know if you.
I'll clearly add something at some point, but not, let the counselors go first.
Okay. Counselors. Counselor Dwight, then Counselor Foster.
Sam, thank you. Actually, the, you know, as I said, as I alluded to before, we, we've been watching a demonstration, a very graphic and grotesque demonstration of what the skills that are applied by people, cynical people who feel that a depressed voter turnout is a successful voter turnout for at least them. And most grotesquely, of course, by the president, who was trying to at every turn cast doubt on the, the security and viability of a mail-in ballot, which is well, grotesque actually doesn't cover it. It's, there's, there are words that I can't say in a public meeting that would conform with the decorum of, of the discussion. However, I, you know, one of the most important things that we've all discovered now that, that we've had an opportunity, at least in a primary, to vote by mail and ballot. One, as, as the Council President acknowledged, Council Powers was able to pull it off seamlessly. And it worked, and voter turnout was unprecedented for a primary. Where, in fact, this district, this community only had one choice. There was only one actual competitive race on that ballot, but the turnout was loud in volume, and I, I can only hope that the next round is, is equally so for the rest of the nation, despite the, the president and his party's perverse efforts to, to disenfranchise this. And this, and to the clerk's credit, we have a clerk who is devoted to the very ethos of what an election should be and what democracy should be, and she takes it very seriously. And she does it with a remarkable compassion. And the fact she didn't have to advance these, these were not things, I mean, in, in some cases, there were proposals that will involve some extra work on her part in her office. That didn't even come up for her. I'm just, I'm just really flattered that we, yes, we, actually, I'm flattered, and nothing to do with me. I, I'm, I'm actually very proud that we have this clerk we have at this time, at this most critical juncture. And while we all get an education on what it be, the value of what a ballot means and what the, an election means, I can't think of a better person to be our shepherd here locally. So that's a long, babbly way to say thank you to Pam Powers, but thank you, Pam.
I think I saw Counselor LaBarge.
Thank you. I have to echo a lot about what Counselor Dwight stated about our, our city clerk. She has worked tirelessly. You can go down to the center of Northampton, early in the morning, there is her car. And she's there every day until late evening. But I also want to thank her staff. Her staff also were very valuable with the mail-in, on, on the voting. And I think that's important, that they are recognized also. So I think this is great. I'm not happy about the COVID nineteen, but I think the mail-in voting is really a right way to go someday. And I had so many people who came to me and said they were happy about receiving their voting in the mail. Because you just not, never know from day to day, health-wise, or something could happen in a family, and you can't vote. They were very pleased with that system. And I think, Sam, I want to thank you for coming out and educating the public about with the Charter Committee and your decisions being made. I think they were very, very valuable. Thank you.
You, Counselor Foster.
I'll, I'll echo that, you know, I was impressed to hear about the, the big increase in voter turnout with the mail-in voting and Clerk Powers, I can attest to her commitment to making sure people are able to vote on the Saturday morning before the election. We were on the phone, and she was scrambling to get a ballot to one of my constituents who that had gone to an incorrect address. So, you know, really impressive. You know, and, and I just want to address, I think, the point about who we're enfranchising and, and, you know, what this, what this means. In two thousand sixteen, when Trump was elected, I was working on a contract at Nature's Classroom to support an elementary school student in accessing a, a class field trip, and I was there with, with a child who's had some pretty severe disabilities, and she was one of three children in her family who all had a variety of disabilities. And the election was the only thing anybody could talk about, right? And so we were, you know, obviously, we were working and not, not talking all day about it, but, you know, as we were talking about it, you know, somebody toward the end of the day asked the mom, have you voted yet? And she just said, she's like, I just keep, I, I can't, I can't make this happen today. And so we're scrambling, do you need a ride? Can we call somebody? Can we get you the polls? And she said, I just can't do it. Like, I can't get my kids dinner, this, this one has this medical need, this one needs to go to bed. I can't actually get there. And it was, it was this heartbreaking moment to look at her just feeling as, and then she said, well, my vote doesn't matter anyway. But it wasn't that truly her vote didn't matter, it's that she had spent all of this time sort of in a system that was telling her that her vote didn't matter, and that, you know, she wasn't, she didn't have the support she needed to be able to be enfranchised, and it wasn't as simple as a ride to the polls. It was, it was much larger than that. And imagine if this very overwhelmed, very dedicated, very caring woman had received a ballot in the mail and could have voted. She would have, it's, it's not as simple as this vote in this one election, but it's, it's participating in your community and feeling a part of it and, and having a say and a voice. And I think that any opportunity we can give people to participate is one that we should take, and, and mailing ballots is, is something, I know it sounds so simple, just go to the polls on election day, but it is not that simple for an awful lot of people. And I, and I, you know, look forward to, to supporting this and, and, you know, hopefully seeing it in action into the future.
Airing that. Counselor Jarrett.
Counselor Foster, thank you so much for that story. I did some research before this, I'm very much in support of it. And so nine states, including California, will be mailing ballots to all registered voters, and five states did this before COVID. And the voter fraud is exceedingly rare, and that includes states that vote almost entirely by mail. Oregon is voted by mail since two thousand, and as reported, fourteen fraudulent votes attempted by mail. Over eight, you know, I think this was in, that report was in twenty eighteen. So you can see that's an extremely small number. And then there's research from the National Academy of Sciences, which says that universal vote by mail does not appear to affect either party's share of turnout. It does not appear to increase either party's vote share, and it does modestly increase the overall average turnout rates. So this, you know, debunks so many claims that are, that are flying around right now, and I think is, has a great step forward.
No, I saw another, I saw another hand before. Mayor Nerkowitz. Do you, is now the moment?
I'm, I'm sure, I, I, I support this. I agree with what others have said so far, obviously agree with the reasons why City Clerk Powers advocated for this, and, you know, we certainly had clear evidence that there's strong support for it in Northampton, and we had a record turnout, and in that, in that September first primary, and almost seventy percent of those who voted in the September first primary, I think it was sixty-seven percent, chose to vote by mail. So actually, if you, if you add up the percentages of who wanted to vote, who, who voted something other than on just election day, either they voted by mail, or they wanted to vote early, as opposed to having to vote, you know, on two, on that Tuesday, it was over seventy percent. So, so clearly, we see that it's worked. And especially with tech, the technology we have now to be able to track ballot, you know, people could actually see when they dropped their ballot, even their application, or when they dropped it in the Dropbox, they can see that it had been processed, it had been received. So, you know, in terms of being able to give voters the assurances that their va- ballot has arrived, and that there's not more than one ballot for a person, that's really easy to take care of with technology and, and scanning, you know, ballots. So I think this is, uh, this would be great for Northampton, and obviously, if there's savings that we can then redirect to other, uh, more important initiatives, then that's all to the good as well.
Other comments, questions? Feels like a lifetime ago, but I'll just remind us that we actually, you know, we had a resolution back in early May that is supporting the state legislation. So this would certainly be in line that if we believe this should happen at the state level, it should happen at the municipal level. All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, roll call, please, Laura, on accepting this recommendation.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that moves on to the solicitor. Um, okay, so now we have removing the need to cite a specific reason to receive an absentee ballot. So here, the summary here says that this charter change is recommended in the eventuality that motion number three, which is what we just discussed, approving mailing ballots, is not enacted. The current requirement to specify a need to receive an absentee ballot is viewed as restrictive. And the committee concurs with the recommendation of the city clerk that it should not be a requirement to receive an absentee ballot. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the recommendation, please.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight and seconded by a whole host of people, Counselor Maori. Sam.
Um, yes, so again, this was another one brought to us by Clerk Powers. And as you said, this would, if mailing ballots was not enacted, this would be the next choice. Clerk Powers had stated that her preference was to mail a ballot to everyone because the mission is to maximize voter participation. But as it is now, you, if you want to vote absentee, you have to fall, you have to qualify. And there are three reasons to qualify. You can, one, be away from your city or town on Election Day. Two, have a disability that keeps you from voting at your polling place. Or three, have a religious belief that prevents you from voting at your polling place on Election Day. So like we said, those are pretty restrictive. This does not encompass a lot of reasons why people can't get there. You know, you work many jobs, or you have a ridiculous schedule that doesn't work with the polling times. So being able to vote absentee without an excuse would enable more voting options and maximize voter participation if mailing ballots isn't done.
Thank you. And as, as I think we discussed in the resolution, Massachusetts has one of the most, still is one of the most restrictive states in terms of criteria that you need to meet to request an absentee ballot. Is that right?
I think so.
Okay, Counselor Dwight.
As Sam said, this is just basically the belt and suspenders version of, of a charter recommendation that if, if the state and/or federal government fails to see the wisdom of mail-in ballots, then at least, at the very least, which should lower the criteria for qualification for absentee. There, there was, were conditions and terms that were created for privileged people. People who have, you know, who, it was, it did not take, as Sam had noted, it did not take into consideration whole huge segments of the, of the community who were challenged in the merited ways from being able to participate. And again, as I said, I mean, you know, the privileged class gets to dictate the terms by which they get to be governed, whereas everyone else just hopes to be able to participate if they're lucky. That's why you often hear people describe voting as a privilege. It's not. I mean, it's, it's, it is a right. You, we should, we should all be vested in it, and we should all have the easiest means, the most, uh, simple means by which we can participate. And, and right now, that is not the case, and it has not been the case historically. And once again, I'm just enormously proud of the fact that we have a city clerk who actually really understands the, the moral weight of her job. And I'm only too glad to support her recommendations.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes, I'm very happy about this change, and I find it very restrictive, very restrictive. And to me, it's also a civil rights issue to me. When you're saying, "Well, you only can do this, you only can do that, you only can do this," that's not right. I think people have the rights to vote the way they want to vote. And when you have to tell them, "Well, you're going to be out of town," or whatever, or whatever you want to do as far as voting. So I am very happy to support this, and hopefully that this is not going to just stay for this year, Sam, correct? Is this just going to happen for this voting, or what?
Our recommendation, or?
Right.
So, yeah, I mean...
All the time.
Municipal.
From municipal.
Okay, all right. I'm so happy about that because I just find it to be a really civil rights issue here of telling people what they can do and what they cannot do. And you should have your rights to vote the way you want to vote. So thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay. None. Roll call, please, Laura, on accepting this recommendation.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. Um, Mayor Narckwitz, is there anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, um, Dan.
Yes, thank you. Before we, before we leave the Charter Review Committee, I just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the committee to thank the city council for its careful consideration of all of our recommendations. I know that many of you, as last, late last year, as you were either running for office or had been elected, took an interest in what we were doing on the committee. And I really appreciate the seriousness with which you considered our recommendations, the careful questions that you asked, and certainly the fact that all of, all of this, all of the recommendations, major and minor, were, were adopted, were accepted unanimously by the council, is very validating of our work. I also want to thank the mayor for his support. Not only his thoughtful recommendations to the council, the things that he brought, the ideas that he brought to us last year, support of his staff. Lynn Simmons, who was then his chief of staff, was a very valuable member of our committee. And Annie Lesko was invaluable in the, in the minutes that she took of all of our deliberations. The city solicitor, Alan Seawald. Not only was your legal wisdom extremely helpful, but your, your experience with the charter and your, your good humor really helped us through a daunting process. And I, I really think that we should take a minute here to acknowledge that this is a pretty far-reaching and very significant package of recommendations, particularly around expanding the electorate. None of them are unique to Northampton, but I'm not aware of a community in Massachusetts that has put together all of the ideas in one package that, that we, as the committee and the city council have done. And I think the fact that it was adopted, or the committee put forward its recommendations without dissent, a nine-person committee, and then the city council adopted all of them unanimously is really a remarkable achievement. And the committee is very, very appreciative. There's obviously a lot of work still ahead to get this through the legislature, but I think this is a significant moment. And 2020 will obviously be remembered for many things, but I hope that the, the local history books recognize the significance of this, of this package of reforms. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your leadership in the commission. We can't thank you enough, to you and Sam and all of the commissioners for your work for a very long time, and thank you for working with us during this process. You know, even with a long hiatus in between. So thank you. I see Counselor Dwight.
There's just one charter change that we actually didn't address that I would like to just float, and that would be that Stan Moulton and Sam Hopper would serve as chairs for all future citizen committees from this point on. Because that was one of the best committees in one of the more difficult circumstances that I've ever been a part of, and it was, it was so successful, almost exclusively due to both your leadership, so, and your very hard work, really hard work. So, yeah, I'll, I'll think about floating that next time and see if we can just get you guys permanently invited.
Thank you. Um, Solicitor Seawald, I know you're here. I just want to check in with you before we move on. If there's anything we can, now that this moves on to you, is there anything we can help you with, or any clarification you need, or?
When I need clarification, you'll be hearing from me, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from me. But I, I know what I need to do, and I'm going to get working on it forthwith, as we say.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for that. It feels good. Um, next up, we are going to recess for finance. Laura, when you're ready, could you call the role of finance?
Sure. Counselor Labarge.
Yeah.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Oh, boy.
Counselor Quinlan.
Thank you, Counselor Quinlan.
I'm here.
Excellent. We are all here. This is going to be a brief meeting. Only item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the August 20th, 2020 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor, seconded by Counselor Quinlan. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, roll call on approving the minutes, please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, they have been approved.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe to adjourn. Roll call, please, on adjourning finance, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, we are back in the council, and we're moving right to financial orders on second reading because as you saw, there were none on first reading. So this is 20.118, in order to appropriate $54,075 in CPA funds for West Farms Road APR project.
Move second reading, please.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight on second reading. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Next is 20.122, in order to appropriate FY 2021 CPA funds for community preservation purposes.
Ooto approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, I believe. Discussion on second reading. Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yeah.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Next, we're moving on to orders. 20.130, in order to designate Northampton Policing Review Commission members as special municipal employees. This is a first reading. I'm going to read this very short order. City Council, October 1st, 2020, upon the recommendation of the mayor and city council president. 20.130, in order to designate Northampton Policing Review Commission members as special municipal employees. Order that members of the Northampton Policing Review Commission, jointly appointed by the mayor and city council, are designated as special municipal employees in accordance with national law, Chapter 268A, Section 1N.
Ooto approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by Counselor Dwight. Mayor Narckwitz, would you care to explain what, what this designation does? Is that okay?
Sure, yeah. This is a designation that we, that's allowed under national law, and we give it to most of our boards and commissions. We have a long list of them, everything from planning board to zoning board. And it, it's, we have many people that are professionals, you know, lawyers, architects, consultants, et cetera, that, that serve on these boards. And without designation as a special municipal employee, it would, it could, it could essentially prevent them in their professional life from, from doing work in the city of Northampton. So it's a very common exemption for these types of boards. And, and so we, the city solicitor actually asked about this and, and pointed out we did something similar, speaking of the Charter Review Commission, when we formed the Charter Review Commission, because it was a, again, an ad hoc, not a standing committee, but we did designate the Charter Review Commission as a special, members as special municipal employees. So this would just extend that same legal status to the newly appointed members of the Policing Review Commission.
You, Counselor Jarrett.
I have a question. In the past, when we've done this designation, it was done by ordinance. And it amended Section 5.7, which is about special municipal employees. And so that's like when we added this, the Select Committee on Pesticide Reduction to the list. Is this just another way to do that? Is there a reason why it's done this way rather than by ordinance?
If I could go back in time, I probably would have not done it that way because we were actually doing, we were actually doing that, well, the old way we used to do it was by order. And so it really, anytime we needed to find out who was on, who had special municipal employee status, we would have to go down to the city clerk's office and ask her to look through a folder of orders. So we actually moved it into the ordinances so that it would be easy to find in one place. But, but really, that was for all the standing committees, and that was, the intention was for standing committees. So we felt that because this one is of a short duration, is, is an ad hoc sort of one-off committee, that putting it in the ordinance book didn't make a lot of sense. So we can extend the same protection because, you know, things like the, the pesticide committee and other ad hoc committees will be in there, even though they've gone out of existence. So that, that was the reason, was to make sure that the list that was in the ordinance book was truly representative of existing standing committees.
Great.
And at some point, we may go back and amend that ordinance to remove the pesticide committee just because it no longer exists.
Right. And I think, you know, this is outside of this agenda item, but just a note that we may want to consider the ordinance review committee also for the future.
Definitely.
Sir Maori.
I just, can you explain it again, what the, why, why do we do this? And I also wanted to say to the two counselors who are sitting on the commission that I, to make sure to tell the other commissioners, I was talking to one today who wasn't aware of it, just... Just, just, just so they know. But yeah, mayor, I, can you just say your, your explanation again, I kind of?
Yeah, I wonder, is that, has the city solicitor left us?
Yeah, I, I think he.
He would also be able to.
Right.
To, um, uh, so, so the, um.
Like, what's the advantage, the advantages if they wanted to work? You said something about they wanted to work in the city. This would prevent that or it would not prevent that?
Um, so basically, um, uh, the conflict, I'll read you right, right off the state's website. The Conflict of Interest Law covers all municipal officials and employees elected or appointed, paid or unpaid, full-time or part-time. And, but there are, um, sections of that law that apply less restrictively to those who are unpaid, um, and extreme part-time officials who've been designated as special municipal employees. So, you know, again, like, like a, you know, a planning board member or someone like that. And so, um, so the, the idea is that if you, um, you know, are, so if you work for the city, um, you're, you're really, you're, you're, you, you can't serve two masters. You, you can't represent someone else, um, before the city in any matter, basically. And so the reason why they've created this, you know, special municipal employee designation, is, is so that it, it, you know, otherwise you basically disqualify anyone from being able to serve on any of these boards unless they were going to have to give up their, you know, whatever their full-time professional, uh, job was when it came to, to representing before the city of Northampton. So it's, it's a distinction that's made for, but it's very clear that you have to be unpaid and you can't work for, um, you know, a certain, more than a certain number of hours. So, you know, we've done it, um, uh, for, again, for most of our city boards and commissions. And so because we have people that are professionals that are on this board and in various, you know, different types of fields, that we wanted to extend the same, uh, the same, um, sort of less restrictive application of Conflict of Interest Law to them, like we did to Charter Review and, um, the pesticide committee.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Has joined us again, so if we have any other.
Right, I remember this when I was on the Human Rights Commission, but I didn't remember the reasoning. But now I remember reading that section and the reasoning being the unpaid, uh, nature. Thank you, mayor.
No problem. City Solicitor? Um, I was just trying to explain the special municipal employee and why it would be important. Maybe you want to just add to it?
A special municipal employee just adds to the exemptions that are, uh, available to, uh, to the, to the commission member. Should any, uh, particularly contractual, uh, contract kind of situations arise, there are, uh, expanded exemptions. And so, um, you know, we like to have, uh, as much participation on the committee as possible. And this is one way of, uh, of doing that.
Thank you.
This was actually my suggestion that we do this because it's such a large committee and I had really no idea what the entanglements of the committee members are with the city and what their conflicts might be.
Um, any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming back on Solicitor Seawald. Okay, there are no further questions. So there's been a request for two readings on this because, as we know, this commission has already started meeting. So there are no further questions, roll call, please, on first.
Can I ask a quick question before you vote? And that is, um, I think when we, we submitted this quite, um, well, actually, I think, I think it's better to come back and, and because the charter, because the ordinance review commission is a standing committee that happens every five years, it would be better to do that in the ordinance. So, never mind, I was going to ask you to, to amend the order to add. But it may make sense to just do it by ordinance because, um, they really need to be in there because every five years it has to happen by charter, so.
Okay. Um, so, roll call on this, uh, just for the Northampton Policing Review Commission members.
Uh, ju- just one point of order of worth mentioning is that, uh, this status does not apply to the elected official serving on these committees. Just so that, that's not suddenly you're liberated of the previous potential conflicts.
You're still special, but.
You, you're still special, but not in the eyes of the Commonwealth. We're all special.
Yeah, we are, we're all very special. Um, roll call, please.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Sarah.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Second. Motion was made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by who?
Counselor Foster.
Counselor Foster on second reading, any discussion, I mean, on, uh, suspension of rules? Any discussion on suspension of rules? Okay, um, roll call, please, on suspension of rules.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Sarah.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Move second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Jarrett, seconded by Counselor Dwight on second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please, on second reading, please.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Sarah.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings. I, uh, know of nothing else on the agenda.
Well, then, after you, Counselor Jarrett. We, I'll, someone's got to do it.
Were you going to make an emotion?
Yeah, I was going to make another emotion, but yeah.
Ah, which I have to second.
And seconded to adjourn.
Yes.
Yes, it has been.
All right, roll call, please, on adjourning.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Sarah.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
We're adjourned and, again, reminder, we are, we have a special meeting in a week on, um, October 8th at 5:00 PM.